Pastor Eldren Morrison of the Shaw Temple AME Zion Church at 775 Hurt Road is here. He's going to give us our invocation and also lead us in the blessed flag. We're awfully glad to have you, so would everyone please rise?
Let us pray. Loving God, Father, we thank you for the beauty of this day. We thank you for our city and for our city officials, and we pray your presence here tonight. We pray that everything that is said and done in this place might be for the good of those who live and reside in this city. And while we are praying tonight, we know and we ask for your presence to be with those who've lost their lives, their families, of those who've lost their lives in this past storm. We pray, oh Lord, for those who are being affected even now, for they are our brothers and our sisters. In Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And this church is located out Hurt Road. If you go past GB's Lake, it's at the intersection of Hicks and Hurt, I think I'm right. And I'm sure they'd love to have you if you're looking for, if you're new in town or looking for a change in a new church. I'm sure they'd love to have you. Thank y'all very much for coming tonight. Agenda changes. The only agenda change we have is a 4A. That item will be tabled indefinitely as at the request of the applicant. That's the only changes I think that we have. Councilmember Derek Norton is absent tonight. He's got some family in Iowa, I think, that he's out there. He will not be here. Under the Merrill report, I believe Councilman Welch has got something that Councilman Norton asked him to take care of tonight, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask, I'm going to mess this name up, Bilal Quintan to come and stand before the podium if you would, Ms. Quintan, I appreciate it. And I want to tell a little story to everybody out there and here in the audience as well. Back during the heat of the summer, Mr. Quintan came across a Smyrna resident lived in Galleria Manor who, her electric wheelchair had broken down. I'm sorry, I welcome this. And please state your name. Nobody gave it to me.
Bilal Quintan.
Gladys Dancy.
Somebody did give it to me, I wasn't sure that was his. Ms. Dancy, thank you both for coming out this evening. Anyway, Ms. Dancy's wheelchair had broken down and the battery had gone dead. And Mr. Quintan offered to, she asked him to make a phone call for him, and he offered to help and pushed her for about half a mile back to her apartment in the heat of the summer. And just went way overboard, above and beyond what the call was for. And it just gives us all a little bit of hope for mankind, I think, that someone was willing to go out of their way and do that. Thank you both for coming out this evening, and you know, we truly appreciate it, Ms. Quintan, what you did, and Ms. Dancy, happy to see you back up and around a little bit. And if you'd like to say something, you're welcome to.
I really don't have much to say besides, uh, thank you. I just think it's a big part to build the community that you live in. You can't work on the world if you won't even work on the neighbors that live beside you. So I don't think that I did nothing special. I think that I did what I was supposed to do, first of all, as a man, and most of all, just being humane to each other. This world is built off hate, and you gotta be the change that you want to see. So I don't feel like I did anything special. I think I did what was right. If it was my grandmother or, you know, my mother, I would expect somebody to do the same for us, so that's all.
Says a lot about your character. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that was a, that's a good way to start the meeting off. After prayer, then we got this, it's just gotta be better all the way through. Item four is land issues, zoning's an annexation, A 2018-270, public hearings, zoning requests, Z 18-011, modification of approved site plan and building elevations, 61.88 acres, land lots 61, 171, 172, 174, 175, 176, 289, Riverview Landing on Riverview Road between Nichols Drive and Dickerson Drive, Arton Companies. This was, this will be tabled indefinitely at the applicant's request, so Mr. Finley, if you'll do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm excited about the prospect of this project and what it means for that part of Smyrna, particularly fronting on the Chattahoochee River and Riverview Road. We're still seeing some morphing changes going on about the final ultimate use, but at this point, I move to table 2018-270, and in the indefinite time.
Have a motion in a second somewhere? Oh, you're telling, okay, motion is second, table, all those in favor of motion, please That's approved 6-0. Item 4B, 2018-384, public hearing authorization for an apartment name change, 2018-384 from 1898 Spring Road, I'm sorry, Spring LP, DBA Spring Apartment Homes to 1898 Spring LP, ADB, I'm sorry, DBA, the Arlo Town Homes with Frederick Dawson as the agent. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. 1890 Spring LP, DBA Spring Apartment Homes recently decided to change the name of the complex to Arlo Town Homes. The proper name change application has been reviewed and approved by the fire marshal, building inspector, city engineer, 911 communications, water department, as well as reported to the business license officer. Therefore, staff recommends approval of a name change from 19, pardon me, 1898 Spring LP, DBA Spring Apartment Homes to Arlo Town Homes located at 1898 Spring Road Southeast with Frederick Dawson as the agent.
This will be, this is in Ms. Bluestein's district. I would just, this is a public hearing. I would ask if there's anyone here that'd like to make any public comment concerning this name change? Let the record show there is none, Ms. Bluestein.
You know, it's so confusing. If you've lived in Smyrna for very long, all of a sudden, everybody's changing their name. But anyway, that being said, if we have no one that wants to make comments on that, then I'm going to, or anyone on the council here, do you have any comments or anything? Okay. Then at this time, I would like to make an approval, for a vote for an approval of 2018-384, the authorization for an apartment name change, 2018-384 from 1898 Spring LP doing business as Spring Apartment Homes to 1898 LP doing business as the Arlo Town Homes with Frederick Dawson as agent.
Second.
Motion is second.
Never mind.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor of motion? That's approved 6-0. Item 4C, under the land issues, zoning's annexation, actually, C, D, and E all go together. Item B is 2018-384, public hearing authorization, I'm sorry, C, D, and E, 2018-298, I'm discombobulating that. Public hearing only zoning requests, Z 18-014, rezoning from R 20 to RAD conditional for the construction of two single-family homes at the density of 3.84 acre units per acre, 0.52 acres, land lot 341 and 381 at 3381 Oak Concord Road, Angel Oak Homes. Ms. Jones, the background, please.
Angel Oak Homes LLC is requesting rezoning from R 20 to RAD conditional and annexation for the construction of two new single-family residents at a density of 3.84 units per acre at the northeast corner of Old Concord Road and Concord Road. The planning and zoning board heard the zoning request at the August 13th, 2018 meeting and recommend approval by a vote of six to zero. Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning request with conditions, and Rusty Martin will be giving additional information about this item.
Yeah, is the applicant here? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here that's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this zoning request? Let the record show none. This is in Ms. Blackmore's district.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Rusty, would you please share information with us?
All right. As Ms. Sadler Jones stated, this request did go before the planning and zoning board back on August 13th. They made a recommendation for approval with staff conditions by a vote of 6-0. The applicant is proposing to rezone the property at the northeast corner of Old Concord Road and Concord Road. The property is currently located in unincorporated Cobb County and has a zoning designation of R 20 in the county. The applicant is proposing to annex that half-acre piece of property into Smyrna and is also requesting a zoning change from R 20 to RAD conditional. With this request, the applicant is proposing to tear down the existing single-family home and build two new single-family homes. In the county, this property has a future land use designation of Neighborhood Activity Center. With this request, we're proposing to change the future land use designation to moderate density residential, which caps the density for the site at 4.5 units per acre. And if you look at the map above, the properties to the west and to the north have a moderate density residential, future land use designation, and then the property to the east and to the south have a designation of Community Activity Center. The applicant has proposed a site plan for this development. This development is a little bit different in the fact that he is proposing two options with respect to the access to the site, and that has to do with whether or not he can obtain agreement to access the site through the existing neighborhood to the north, which is Concord Lake Village, or whether or not he'd have to come off Old Concord Road through a shared driveway. And I'll show you both those options and explain them along the way. As you can see, option A, the two homes will face Old Concord Road. Access to the site will be through the shared driveway that is accessed from Concord Lake Lane, which is within the community Concord Lake Village. With this request, the applicant is proposing the following minimum setbacks, a front setback of 25 feet, exterior side setback of 25, an interior side setback of five, and a rear setback of 25. And those setbacks are consistent with the setbacks established for Concord Lake Village. Here's the location of the connection with Concord Lake Village and their shared driveway. And these are proposed stormwater detention facility locations. With this request, there are five variances associated with this. The first deals with a lot size reduction from 15,000 square feet down to 10,753 square feet, a lot width reduction from 100 feet down to 52, a front setback reduction from 35 feet to 25 feet, an interior side setback from 10 feet to 5 feet, and a rear setback reduction from 30 feet down to 25. And staff is supportive of all those requested variances. This is option B, if they're not able to obtain access from the adjoining subdivision to the north, and it would require to access the site from Old Concord Road, and they've developed a site plan that deals with that, they would have a shared driveway from Old Concord Road at a width of 18 feet at the road, so you can have two cars on that driveway. And then it would access the rear entry garages at the backs of the homes. Same setbacks as before. There's an 18-foot shared driveway between the homes, stormwater detention facility, nothing changes, and the same variance requests apply. With this request, he has submitted some architectural renderings of what the homes would look like, their traditional style homes. Here's some pictures of the subject property to give you some context of the property we're dealing with, and then some adjacent properties, so you know what the surrounding area looks Community Development recommends approval of the rezoning from R 20 to RAD conditional for two single-family homes at a density of 3.84 units per acre with the following conditions. Standard conditions that deal with, standard conditions from section 1201, which deal with the composition of the home, the stormwater management, underground utilities, traffic improvements, and landscaping requirements. In addition to the standard conditions, we've got some special conditions. Number 10 outlines the requested setbacks that we explained earlier. 11 establishes the minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. 12 establishes the minimum lot width at 50 feet. 13 establishes the minimum floor area for the home at 1,800 square feet. 14 requires a developer to be responsible for any water and sewer improvements deemed necessary. 15 requires the shared drive to have a minimum width of 18 feet. 16 requires the protection of any trees planned to be saved on site. And 17 ties the zoning of the property to the site plan submitted, and 18 ties the zoning of the property to the elevation submitted. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Moore?
Rusty, question now, on the second land map.
Section, second site plan?
Correct, second site plan. The driveways would be on the side of each house, correct? The side of, going through instead of around?
Yeah, the driveway would be in between.
Between the two homes.
Homes.
Okay. Have we established, or has the city engineer said anything about them getting in and out as it relates to traffic? Because that's a pretty congested area in the mornings.
Yes, the city engineer reviewed the proposed plan. He has recommended that the driveway width be a minimum 18 feet. That way, if somebody's coming out of the development, there's an opportunity for a person turning into the development to turn in and not hold up traffic as persons going out trying to get onto Old Concord Road, so they can pass each other and get in and out of the property without affecting traffic on Old Concord.
Okay, okay.
It's not optimal, but the existing drive that's there today is in that same location.
So Rusty, does it, I just wonder if it, does it meet the distance requirements from that intersection, that drive?
The city engineer has reviewed it, and he's okay with the situation as proposed.
Isn't that an existing curb cut there already permitted?
The existing driveway is there as of today.
And Rusty, I might have missed it, but what will determine the drive location?
What do you mean, what will?
Choice A and choice B, right? One to the, behind the homes, onto the alleyway, or?
From my understanding, the developer's been working with the adjoining subdivision to the north, Concord Lake Village, to get approval, to gain access to their existing shared drive. Should they get approval and everything goes forward, then option A is the option that everyone truly wants to do. Should that fall apart and they're not able to obtain those approvals, and we provided them an option B that we're okay with as well.
One other question for you. So staff's recommending a lot size reduction from roughly 15,000 square feet down to about 10,000 square feet?
Yes.
Could you just explain the rationale behind that recommendation?
Because 15,000 square feet requires a density of 2.9 units per acre. The gentleman is proposing a development density of 3.8 units per acre, and which requires us to use RAD zoning category, because we don't have a zoning category that addresses basically from 3.6 units per acre to 6 units per acre.
So if we had an existing zoning category, somewhat suitable, that would match this development?
We would use that, but we don't at the moment, and which is a change that we're proposing to make to you in the next two weeks. So, yeah, it's not optimal, but the R 15 zoning category establishes a single-family lot size for detached single-family homes is R 15, even though it allows a density up to 6 units per acre, which doesn't match what is going on.
Got it, thank you.
So is it true that this pair of homes will be compatible and simpatico with what's adjacent to it technically?
Based on what they've shown, staff believes they'll be compatible. I don't, they have an agreement in principle with the adjoining subdivision, so my assumption is the subdivision also feels that they're in agreement with that.
So will they be part of the HOA regardless of which driveway plan would be?
That would be a question for him, but my assumption is it would only be based on whether or not they got acceptance for the driveway.
Oh, okay, so if they had the driveway between the two homes off of Old Concord Road, then they probably wouldn't be part of that HOA, is that right?
I don't know. That'd be a question for him.
Yeah, well, any other questions, Rusty, that pertain to the zoning itself, then if there's none, if there's no more, then we'll hear from the applicant. If you'll come forward, does he need to be sworn in? And if you'll just tell us who you are and your relationship to this zoning.
Yes, my name is Bobby Harris. I live at 4511 Glen Point Way, Smyrna, Georgia. I represent Angel Oak Homes, which is a small builder renovator that operates in the Smyrna market area. We have a contract position on this specific property, subject to rezoning and annexation into the city of Smyrna. Rusty did a tremendous job, I think, in explaining exactly what we're asking for. I've been doing this for 35 years. They have done a lot of subdivision work, and the staff has been very professional and appreciate all their input. With regards to the, we have met with the people over Concord Lake Village. We met with the president of the association, he's very much in favor, along with several of their members. The only thing that really stands in the way of us perfecting the alleyway easement has to do with legal things that we need to get cleared up with regards to title, to make sure that we can perfect that easement, to make it work, whether or not we would, and if we do get the easement, then we will become part of the Concord Lake Homeowners Association. If we don't, we probably won't, but that would, you know, as I said, right now, we're making ourselves subject to their architectural control, so we're going to be, we have established a very positive working relationship with those people, and I don't know whether, I still think it might be of advantage to still join, but I, at least at this juncture, I'm about 80% sure that, to 90% sure, that we'll be able to work through all the legal aspects of making this, I guess you would call an alley, or driveway access, I don't like the word alley, but it's a driveway access through Concord Lake Village. Any questions?
What's the price range on your homes?
They will be based in the high fours, which usually when people basically add to it, they'll be in the mid-fives, so the square footages will be very comparable to what's going on right now in Concord Lake Village.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you for your continued investment in Smyrna, Mr. Harris, over the years. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, if there's no other questions, I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing. We're going to go to D now, 2018-397, approval of ordinance number 2018-10, annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, land lot 340 and 381, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, 0.53 acre tract located at 3381 Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia, will become part of Ward 3 effective October the 1st, 2018. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, I would like to make a motion to approve 2018-397, approval of ordinance 2018-10, annexation request, 100% of owners requesting annexation, land lot, it says 340, but is it 341? 340 and 381?
Let's see, the first, C and E say 341, and this one says 340. D, that should be land lot 341.
It's 340 and 381.
340 and 381, okay. Land lights, land lots, 340 and 381, 17th District, 2nd Section, Cobb County, Georgia, 0.53 acre tract located at 3381 Old Concord Road, Smyrna, Georgia, will become part of Ward 3 effective October 1, 2018.
Seconds. Motion is second to approve this annexation request. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion? That's approved 6-0. All right, item 4E, the final vote, 2018-396, zoning request, Z 18-014, rezoning from R 20 to RAD conditional for the construction of two single-family homes at a density of 3.84 units per acre, 0.52 acres land lot, that should be 340, Ms. Conkin?
It should be, yeah, 340 and 381.
340 and 381, and 3381 Old Concord Road, Angel Oak Homes, LLC. Ms. Blackman.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, if we have no further questions, Mayor, I would like to move for approval of 2018-396, zoning request for Z 18-014, rezoning from R 20 to RAD conditional for the construction of two single-family homes.
at a density of 3.84 units per acre, 0.52 acres. Land lots 340 and 381, 3381 Old Concord Road, Angel Oaks, Angel Oak Homes LLC.
I have motion to second to approve this zoning request. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's approved 6-0, thank y'all very much. Item 5 is previous licenses, we have none. Item 6 is formal business. A 2018-402, approval of Ward 2 appointment of Ben Eggers to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill term to expire August 2020. Ms. Bluestein?
Thank you, Mayor. Is Mr. Eggers here? He mentioned, he mentioned he might be here, but anyway. At this time, I would like to move for approval on 2018-402, the approval of the Ward 2 appointment of Ben Eggers to the Smyrna Tree Board to fulfill term to expire August 2020.
Second.
I have motion to second to approve this appointment. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. It's unanimous 6-0. Item 7 is commercial, excuse me, commercial building permits. We have none. Item A is consent agenda. Ms. Jones, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
The consent agenda reads as follows. Item A, approval of the September 4th, 2018, mayor and council meeting minutes. Item B, approval of the August 16th, 2018, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Item C, approval of the September 4th, 2018, pre-council meeting minutes. Item D, approve the request for a road closure permit for Southern General Contracting on Oak Drive, Smyrna, Georgia. During the day, staff recommends 9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The request from the applicant was from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And this is because of our current ordinance, which is the reason for the staff approval. For construction of, staff recommendation, pardon me. For construction of a new sewer service in Forest Main located at 5220 South Cobb Drive. Item E, authorize Atkins Park Tavern to operate a beer wine specialty two-item cocktail station beyond the boundaries of the premises of Atkins Park Tavern, covered by the license at the Smyrna ugly sweater, Smyrna ugly Christmas sweater block party and movie night in the downtown area Saturday, December 8th, 2018, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. At an assigned vendor space within the approved event. The exact location of the cocktail drink station is to be within the food service area for the event from West Spring Street to Village Green Traffic Circle and from Village Walk Bank Street to King Street Southeast. Streets closed during the event will be King Street in front of Veterans Memorial, from Bank Street to Village Green Circle in the front of the community center. Item F, approve the closing of the following streets for the Smyrna Parks and Recreation, Casper's Fall Festival and Movie. Spring Street from Bank Street to Village Green Circle. Entire Village Green Circle from Atlanta Road from 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. On Friday, October 12th.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
I second.
You have motion to second to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor of the motion? It's approved 6-0. Item 9 is committee reports, we'll start tonight with Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Well, I hope that fall comes any day, but I'm not putting a lot of faith in it. But I don't know about the rest of you, but I sat there horrified this weekend looking at what was going on in North Carolina and South Carolina. Those people have had, I mean, who knew? And I know some of them were told to leave and they chose not to, but you don't set yourself up for something like that. Probably they had done that many times before and had no idea what was getting ready to happen. So I think we should all say a prayer and for them, that they somehow pulled their lives back together again. I know that different places are taking donations on their behalf, so maybe we could consider doing that too. But I just can't get past what a horror show it was for them. Thank you, that's all, Your Honor.
Ms. Blackman?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to take the time to thank everybody that came out to taste of Smyrna this weekend. I had an opportunity to spend a few hours out there. It was a little hot, if you were there. But it was a very nice turnout. And just to see all of the community come together in such a wonderful way, it was really great. Especially to see the kids in those huge bouncy houses that they had out there. One was like a shark and a big dinosaur or something, but it was great. So I just want to say thank you. And also, along the lines with Councilwoman Bluestein, just want to send my prayers out to the families that are in the wake of this Florence storm. Just to help out in any way that we can, let's do that. And with that, Mayor, I yield.
Mr. Welch?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Ms. Workenson?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of announcements from Mary Moore, the director of the library. And I'm just going to read those off here. Do you ever worry about your children's safety when they use the internet? Smyrna Library is hosting a technological home makeover workshop to help you strengthen your family's online security. The workshop is free and will be held this Friday, September 21st, at 10:30 a.m. in the library reading, meeting room. And please RSVP at sreference@smyrna-ga.gov. Okay, and then also, school may be out next week, but Smyrna Library's programmers are not taking a break. Monday has a visit from the Tooth Fairy in the morning, and adults can enjoy a free cooking class that night. Tuesday has craft afternoon, and then Wednesday has three storytimes and creativity club for tweens. And Thursday has two more storytimes. There is always something happening at the library. Visit their online calendar of events at smyrnalibrary.com for more details. And with that, I yield.
Tim Gu?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few notes and updates from Campbell High School. First, senior Natalie Friedrich, a lyric soprano, recently competed in the prestigious competition American Prodigy, earning second prize. She'll perform in the winner's recital at Carnegie Hall in December. So congratulations to Natalie. When she was planning her trip, she asked her teacher, how do you get to Carnegie Hall? Practice, practice, practice. Boom, boom. A really noteworthy story is Mario Alexander, who's a junior at Campbell High. Recently, you might have seen in the paper, helped save the life of two fellow employees at Target who were assaulted and stabbed, security guards. So he is also a, in the explorers program of Cobb County Police. So he applied his training, helped save the lives, and waited for the paramedics to come and helped the two folks. So congratulations to Mario for really being involved and taking action. Next is Dr. Walker, who's a principal at Campbell. And Josh Ford is an assistant principal, held the Business Partners Lunch-In last week. Forty businesses showed up, which is really a great number. All willing to contribute and participate in supporting our students at Campbell. One major project they're working on is trying to install a new electric marquee in front of the high school. So if anybody's interested in joining and supporting that, Josh Ford would be happy to point you in the right direction. Naming rights are available. Let's see, last but not least, Campbell Varsity Girls Softball made the state playoffs again, second year in a row, second year in their history. Favorite players are starting center fielder, my daughter, Abby. Good luck, Campbell, thank you.
No prejudice, don't you, don't you? Mr. Rodfield?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, practice, practice, practice. That's a good one. I want to announce that the Finance Administration Committee will be meeting on October 2nd at our next meeting. I'll profile that again, just to let you know, give you a little heads up. 4:30 in the afternoon, we're going to get up our periodic updates on the finances of the city, which are in good shape, by the way. I want to note that 42 years ago, the Space Shuttle Program was launched in 1976. It's just an important milestone for some of us who appreciate that outreach from our planet to the outer reaches. I'm just excited about seeing what's going to happen next. Additionally, I'll say that Stonecraft City Council is coming to visit Smyrna, trying to learn from our example to emulate us as they're putting their relatively new city to work on a lot of plans, including their financing mechanism for how they can fund some of their programs and their infrastructure as Smyrna has done over the years. Additionally, I want to note that it is Constitution Day. 231 years ago, the Constitution was adopted by those gathered in Philadelphia. I'm very humbled to recognize that a document that serves our country well and is used by governments at all levels, including here at Smyrna City Hall, is rooted in a base of very thoughtful men's work product that we celebrate today, 231 years, Constitution Day. I just urge, it's a short read, you can handle it on the, on the weekend. I'd urge a reminder that we have a chance to read that. Also, I want to lend my prayers and thoughts to the families that will continue to have to address the aftermath of the hurricane and the storms that came ashore in the Carolinas. I was born in Columbia, South Carolina, so I have a very close affinity to the folks there. And I grew up on the Georgia coast thereafter. So anything that happens where storms come in, I'm very attuned to. And I hope we continue to offer our hospitality as a region, which we have done during this storm, and an outreach for those as we go and support their recovery efforts as well. Finally, I think we're down to 10 games, the magic number, Atlanta Braves, to win the national lead east. And Corky and I are rooting for them, him more than me because he's got season tickets. We want to see these guys finally win a world championship here in Cobb County, right on the front doorstep of Smyrna. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Jones, anything else? Mr. Andrews?
I'd just like to thank city engineer Eric Randall, submit his letter of resignation. And just like to thank him for his time and service with the city of Smyrna.
Ms. Scott Cock? Ms. Terry Graham?
Yes, I do. I'd like to introduce Tina Monahan. She's the new deputy city clerk. She has been with us for a couple of weeks. And so I'm just proud to introduce her and welcome her to the city. Thank you.
Tina, anything you'd like to say? Tina, you're on TV. We're glad you're here.
Scaredy cat.
Yeah, I got you. Okay, we do not have show calls here, no one signed up for citizens' input. There's no other business to be brought for this body ad hoc, it's meeting adjourned at 7:44.
See you later, I'll see you later, girl. I'll see you later. I thought I was going to, but I did.